Good evening and welcome. The time is 7:01 PM. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, February 25th School Committee Special Meeting, held in the School Committee Conference Room of the Stoughton Public Schools District Office at 31 Pierce Street in Stoughton, Mass. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, to begin, could I have a motion to open this special meeting for the purposes of interviewing our candidate for superintendent?
So moved.
All right, that motion was made by Lindsey. Do you have a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Armando. Second, Armando, it's moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's carried 5-0. The meeting is open. Tonight, we are here to interview Ms. Juliet Miller for the position of Stoughton Public Schools Superintendent. This will be following Dr. Byetta's retirement on June 30th, 2026. This interview will have a few parts. Ms. Miller, have a chance to introduce yourself, and then our Superintendent Succession Plan Working Group will introduce two scenarios that we asked Ms. Miller to prepare as part of her interview. After maybe 15, 20 minutes, we'll move on to questions from the committee with each member asking a question before we loop back around. And then Ms. Miller can offer some additional thoughts or closing statement or interview us if she'd like to finish the interview. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Miller.
Thank you so much. So I am Juliet Miller. I'm the high school principal, and I have been for 13 years. I am a proud former Black Knight student myself. I was born and raised in Stoughton. My parents also grew up in Stoughton, went to Stoughton schools themselves, and chose to raise my sister and I in Stoughton. I went to the North Elementary School, now the Daw School, went to the Stoughton Junior High, now the Middle School, and graduated from the original Stoughton High School. I am a Stoughton through and through, bleed black and orange, love the community. It has given me so much and has given my family so much. It is an opportunity and a privilege to be able to serve the Stoughton community in the role as principal and has been for 13 years. I was also a math teacher at Stoughton for seven years and the math director at Stoughton for seven years, or five years, and taught in Roselandale-St. Clairs, was an assistant principal at King Philip Regional High School and Aponequit Regional High School for two years each before coming back to Stoughton to be the principal. And I'm really excited about this opportunity to interview this evening and to talk to you about my candidacy.
Great, thank you so much. I'd like to turn it over to Lindsey and Chris to introduce the two scenarios. And yes, Lindsey, take it away.
I wanted to turn my mic on, but it was already on. So Ms. Miller, thank you so much for joining us this evening and for all of the work you did to prepare for the interview. So for folks who, I mean, you all know this, but for folks who may be watching, we asked Ms. Miller to respond to two challenge scenarios, which are things that may happen but hopefully won't happen in the superintendent role that you would have to address. So what I will do is, I think, just read each one first, just so folks who are following along at home know what we asked you to respond to. So the first scenario was...
Lindsey?
Yes.
Point of order, can we just introduce one and let her respond? And then maybe do the second one in case folks are trying to follow along?
Yeah. No, that, thank you.
Sure.
This is what happens when I go off post-it note. Okay, so I'll read the first one, and then I think what we'll do is ask you to just walk us through your process, how you approached it, and how you did your planning. And like Catherine said, we'll hope to spend about 15, 20 minutes total on the scenario, so just want to, I'll be keeping an eye on the clock to keep us on pace. So the first scenario is, "Over a scheduled school vacation week, a fire breaks out at one of the district's elementary schools. Fortunately, no one was injured, as the building was unoccupied at the time. However, the damage is significant, rendering the building unfit for use for an extended period. The fire department has deemed the building structurally unsafe, and there's no immediate timeline for when repairs or rebuilding can be completed. This means that a significant number of students and staff members from the school will need to be relocated temporarily to other facilities within the district or to alternative locations. Parents, staff, and the broader community are understandably concerned, and there are numerous logistical, financial, and operational challenges to address." So again, something that could happen, but hopefully won't. But would love to hear how you approached this scenario and just walk us through what your thought process was and how you planned your response.
Absolutely. Am I allowed to refer to it?
It's pretty perfect.
Because it was quite lengthy. So I appreciated the scenarios. The first one that you just read about the fire, I would like to acknowledge that, as the superintendent, I would certainly be relying on the experts who we employ here at Stoughton Public Schools, my leadership team, the crisis team. I don't pretend to know all the answers or profess to be able to make all of the decisions by myself. This exercise sort of forced me to do so, but I don't want to give the impression that that is the way I would work or move forward. In a time of crisis, fortunately or unfortunately, however you would like to look at it, I have gone through several crises in my career as an administrator, and I am fairly skilled in managing crisis at this point in my career. One of the things I really thought about as I looked at this scenario was, you can't forget about the human element, and it's extremely important to be communicating, being transparent, having your communication be genuine, sincere. People need to feel that you are caring for them and that you are working hard for them. And so that communication needs to be pretty regularly and pretty upfront and pretty immediate in this case. I would want to, you know, use the people that we have in place, Jeffrey Pickett, for example. I would ask him to be assisting along with our technology to put out those messages and delegate that area to him as well. But I also considered that there are times in crisis where people actually want to hear from you. They don't necessarily just want to read an email. And so considering actually putting out a video message either from myself or the principal so that they see a face with that message, that can go a long way with our families. You can imagine that in this situation, families are going to be anxious, they're fearful, uncertain, and so you want to try to alleviate that as quickly as you can. The other pieces that we're thinking about, or what I was thinking about through this is, how would we move forward with educating these students? Not really understanding or knowing how long the school building may be unoccupiable or unusable. I presented a few different options that we might be able to look at as a school district to be able to educate our students so that their education is not disrupted long-term. Of course, it is going to be disrupted. There was a fire, there's no way to undo that at that point, it's going to be disrupted. So try to minimize that disruption as much as possible. And in making these decisions, I would have really three priorities in mind. The safety, security, and well-being would be number one, and that would be for all students and staff. The second would be minimizing disruption, and of course, budgetary costs, which is a reality for the situation as well. In thinking about temporary locations, you know, we might consider some alternate locations that might be available in Stoughton. We have the Stoughton Youth Center, we have the YMCA. But when thinking about even temporary placement, bringing an entire elementary school, first of all, to Stoughton Youth Center is not possible. At the YMCA, you would be shutting down their business. That's probably not really a viable option in this case. And so then you would be looking at trying to use space in the elementary schools is probably the first place you would look, except if it were right now, the elementary schools are already at capacity. There isn't any room there. And so we could consider modules, but that's going to take a little bit of time to get those in place as well. So you need something more immediate to be able to house those students. And so we do have space in the high school and the middle school, although we are also at capacity. We have these large spaces that could be broken down and chopped up into smaller spaces. Again, not ideal, but you are not dealing in an ideal situation. So I think you would, we could use those spaces to at least temporarily house the students and educate them while we try to come up with a more permanent solution or a longer-term solution. If the building was going to be closed permanently, then of course, we would want to be looking at modulators, and we'd want to be looking at potentially putting them on the elementary school campuses. I have the privilege right now of chairing the redistricting committee, so that was actually helpful in working through this scenario, thinking about the cost of the modulators, thinking about having to redistrict the students, and what that would mean to Stoughton, what that would mean to families. And if modulators could be a temporary solution, perhaps instead of disrupting the elementary schools, you could also house them at the middle school and high school, which have a larger amount of asphalt, again, if that was going to be a temporary solution. That's more centrally located as well. You'd end up saving on transportation costs because you're bussing to more of a central location rather than all over Stoughton. So there's a lot of things you want to be thinking about, and you want to be considering funding sources as well. I don't know for the MSBA whether or not there would be emergency funds through the MSBA, but we would certainly be looking for any state or federal funds or emergency funds. We would be, I would be working with the Assistant Superintendent of Finance to look at our insurance and how that would work and how that would refund us or pay for some of the damage. And we'd have to be considering all these things as we move forward. Modulators, of course, are going to be your most costliest option, so you need to be weighing that out. But housing them temporarily in the high school and middle school is also going to have some costs to it. You'd look at perhaps changing school schedules, definitely lunch schedules, you're rerouting kids in the high school and the middle school to different locations. You would have to think about your special populations and perhaps moving high school students and middle school students into different classrooms so that you could put special populations in a dedicated room. There's a lot to this scenario that we would be juggling and focusing on, on a lot of moving pieces. But the priority would be making sure that our students are safe, our staff is safe, that their education is the least disrupted that it can be, and that we are working as quickly as we can to come to a more permanent solution that is more appropriate for an educational setting.
So thank you so much for walking us through that. I appreciate it. I know there were a lot of components to this and a lot of layers, so I think what we can do is ask, do folks have clarifying questions or anything that they wanted to dig into in terms of Ms. Miller's response? I think less in terms of like the weeds and the details of the response and more just like high-level like mindsets, how did you approach this? Factors that you would be curious about.
Chris, you seem to have the most, you have the most response to it. I did, very enthusiastic. And also want to be mindful of time. Ms. Miller, as you were walking through this scenario, I'm wondering if at any point your thought process was thinking about the opportunity that this might present, and what might that opportunity be, and how might you explore those opportunities?
In any challenge, you're also going to have the opportunity for some change and for some growth. If, for example, the school building were going to be closed permanently, you have the opportunity to potentially rebuild or build a facility that is driven around an educational plan, more in tune with how we're actually operating the elementary schools at this time, more in line with how they want to educate our children in this 21st century. There's the opportunity as well to actually, you know, look at safety of all schools, making sure that, I mean, thankfully, there hasn't been a fire in a school in a really long time, but we want to, we want to make sure that we don't have that repeat if that's happened in Stoughton. You know, I'm doing some safety audits in the buildings, making sure that all of our buildings are up to code and that they are safe environments. It might be the opportunity to look at installing sprinkler systems or alarm systems or other security features into the building. There's always the opportunity to try to partner with some of your town departments and local organizations to increase opportunities after school for some of our displaced students, for providing additional academic opportunities. So there are lots of opportunities there for growth, actually. You're welcome.
My interest would be asking you questions about funding, one of the things that must be done, you spoke about it briefly, but in that moment, money sometimes fixes problems. Some people say it doesn't, but sometimes it fixes problems. In that case, it would, renting facilities and so on. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what do you need immediately as far as funding, and where would you get this funding aside from MSBA, which is down the line in buildings and so on?
So that's a great question, that we would have to explore all of our options in terms of what funding would be available, emergency funding through the state or federal government in terms of loans or grants or just emergency funding in general. We would need to really get immediately into that line of questioning and find out where we can get some money, because as you say, we need that to be able to move forward. Any of the solutions that we would choose are going to, there's going to be a cost associated with it. Even housing them in the middle school or the high school, you're going to have costs of replacing learning materials, educational materials, you know, shifting buses and scheduling, so that is all going to come to a cost. So money is going to be needed pretty immediately. I would imagine that in the very short term, in the very immediacy, you would be looking at potentially freezing your operating budget at that moment so that you have available funds already in the system to be able to draw from. That means that you would be perhaps potentially not, you know, taking a fail trip down the road or buying a particular textbook or technology, but again, we're not in an ideal situation. So you'd probably want to freeze those operating budgets now so that you had that money, whatever money you hadn't spent already would be available for that immediate solution.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I think I'm balancing keeping an eye on the clock and also asking questions, but yeah, I want to make sure we have time to...
Just one more quick question. Thinking about some of the challenges that we're already facing and how an emergency situation like this might exacerbate that, and I'm thinking explicitly about absenteeism for vulnerable populations, did you think at all about what you might have to do above and beyond to reach out to those populations to try and ensure that we continue to engage them?
Yes, absolutely. So first of all, you're going to want to make sure that we have in place supports for all of our students, but particularly those of specialized populations and at-risk students. So tapping into those local resources to bring in counseling services, outreach, translation services, and even Riverside, which has been a tremendous asset to us over the years, who comes in and they can help in those emergency situations, walk you through different scenarios and suggestions, and they provide counseling support as well for staff, which has been a blessing. So you would want to be doing those things. Again, messaging is really important, making sure that it's genuine and it's forthright and it's frequent enough that you're easing those fares, you're connecting with those families, they know that you are working for them, you know that you are trying to get the matter solved and resolved quickly, you have their best interest in mind, that they are safe, that, you know, actions have been taken to ensure that the buildings are safe and they can come to those buildings. So really, it's that constant communication, that outreach, making it personal, personable, and genuine, and then using the other resources that you can tap into like counseling and translation, the ELL department, using them and the magic that they make every day to help you through that process. You're welcome.
Are we feeling good? Okay. Well, thank you for presenting that. So I'm going to, I think we're at 7:20. Do we feel okay going to like 7:30 with this? Does that, I feel like...
I'm fine.
Okay.
I can be here all night.
I mean, hopefully, hopefully we won't do that to you. But, okay, so what I will do is read Scenario 2 out loud, which I think was, may move a little faster just because there were a lot less like elements of complexity to it. So Scenario 2 was more of an academic challenge, and it was a decline in MCAS scores. So this says, "When MCAS scores for the previous year are made available, you notice that a large portion of the district's students show a significant decline, particularly noticeable in grades 3 through 5 in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. While there are many factors that might contribute to this decline, the drop has prompted concerns from the community regarding the quality of education and whether students are adequately prepared for future success. As superintendent, you are tasked with addressing this issue and guiding the district through both immediate remediation and long-term academic improvement strategies." So again, would love to hear how you approached it, what mindsets you brought to it, and just walk us through how you tackled this one.
Absolutely. So this one wasn't as far off from a typical experience that we might have. At the high school, certainly, we have seen not necessarily this drastic of a drop-off, but there have been times where we've looked at our data and we're not happy with what it looks like. So I was able to rely a lot on that previous experience and what we've done, and knowing that we have made huge gains at Stoughton High School, it provided some structure for how we might go about this particular issue. First, you're going to want to look at the data and disaggregate it in every way that you possibly can, to really start asking all kinds of questions about what possibly could have gone wrong or where the problem might lie. You want to try to identify whether it's a curriculum pacing issue, a curriculum issue, are there gaps in the curriculum, redundancy in the curriculum? Was this a bad test? I mean, that's possible. If it's a drastic drop-off in one year, that's possible, there's some concerns around the actual testing mechanism that was used. You want to look at what our attendance looks like, what we're doing for instructional methods and delivery, and you're not going to be able to, by looking at that data, identify this very specific cause, and it's probably a multi-factored cause that causes something like a drastic drop-off in three grades worth of MCAS scores. So you're probably going to take this approach where it's a multi-prong approach, and you're going to try to tackle it from all different directions by providing professional development to teachers, by looking at your curriculum pacing, looking at your curriculum alignment, crosswalking it with the standards to make sure that we don't have redundancy and gaps. We would make sure that we have the proper instructional strategies in place. Do we need an interventionist? Do we need some tiered support? Bringing those things in and using those, we just brought in coaches not too long ago into our elementary schools. They would be a great resource in this case, where we would use them to help with our teaching and our instruction. You might even do a survey to the families to try to identify if there are factors outside of school that are impacting what's happening inside of school, such as attendance, obstacles to getting to school. Those can certainly be deterrents to academic success. So we want to look at every aspect of the problem that we can and really put as many things in place to see what will work. You would look at providing extended school day options, putting back the vacation academic programming that we've had in the past, doing summer programming for students. You know, in terms of being concerned about a cost, you would probably offer that summer program at a reduced cost or no cost so that it's not a barrier to students who need it or at-risk students. You look at it as many different ways as you can, because you're going to need to tackle that problem in lots of different ways. And of course, if the public is feeling there's some doubt in what you're doing as an institution, you really want to make sure you're communicating with those families, being honest and transparent again about, we've noticed this drop in the data, and these are the things that we're going to do about it, these are the things we're putting in place, these are the things you can take advantage of as a family, offering family nights or game nights where they are learning some literacy and numeracy games and game-playing, sending home materials with families that they can take home and do with their children as well. So really coming at it all different angles and making sure that you are partnering with your families and with outside resources, if possible, to provide, again, as much coverage for this issue as you can and to bring those scores right back up.
Thank you. So I guess we can ask questions again, if anyone has any. I have one that's top of mind for me, if it's okay if I start off this time. So I really appreciated the response, Ms. Miller, and was wondering, if you were in the superintendent role, how might you take advantage of some of the resources and expertise available at the district level in order to offset some of these? I know you talked a lot about leaning into expertise of your staff and delegating in the first response, so I was curious how you'd apply that here.
Same thing, it would be the same. I would be looking for my elementary school principals, meeting with them, looking at the data with them carefully, delegating to them to then share that data with their staffs, and to collect, gather information from their teachers about what they're seeing and asking the questions that they need to ask about that data as well. It's using the curriculum coordinators that we have to help look at our curriculum and our pacing and our instructional methods. And so again, it's a team effort. This isn't the Juliet Miller Superintendent Show, it would be a team effort.
Thank you.
Yes.
Who else has a question? Anyone else have a question? Chris? Yes.
Thank you, I really appreciate the detailed responses. I know these are not easy scenarios. I was wondering, just to piggyback off of Lindsey's question, what resources might you tap outside of the district, looking at, for example, peer districts or benchmarking? You know, how might you deploy data available externally to help inform the context for the data that's happening internally?
So outside of Stoughton Public Schools, we do have partners that could be helpful in this situation. I think this will answer your question, I hope. Stoughton Public Library, for example, is a partner that we can tap into, who often offers programming and academic programming of their very own. If we partnered with them to be more targeted and intentional with the items that they're offering, and perhaps, you know, using sort of the same ideas that we are using, that would be an opportunity to have another avenue for families to go to and to take advantage of. For some families, you know, going to the Stoughton Public Library may be more inviting than coming into one of the elementary schools for an evening program, and so there's the opportunity there to utilize them to strengthen the work that you're doing inside of school. There's also the opportunity to partner with our, you know, Be Inspired and Stoughton Youth Center for opportunities to address concerns that families may have or that the school district may have in terms of being able to provide resources so our students are dealing with any sort of challenges they may have that are not academic, and making sure that they're in the right mindset and prepared to learn when they are in school. So there is some of those outside resources we might tap into. You're welcome.
Anything else? I mean, concluding my questions, Lindsey and Chris? I have. If nobody else has questions about this specifically, I can close this out of the interview challenge scenario, but I want to ask one question first before we do that, which is just generally, as you reflect on your process of putting these together, I'd be curious if you could share, what was the part that you really enjoyed the most of responding to these scenarios, and then what felt the most challenging or like the least enjoyable?
It was all wonderful. Thank you for giving it to me.
I have to say that.
My favorite part, I guess, is that I really do thrive on sort of strategic planning and thinking about how to put these different pieces together and thinking of it from all different perspectives. It maybe comes from my math background, I'm not sure, but I just have this brain that loves to see all the different pieces and see how they fit together. So looking at the different scenarios and seeing how, you know, if you hit this domino, it's going to knock all these other dominos over. Do I want to knock all those dominos over, or do I put some stopgaps in to make sure that that doesn't happen? And so like thinking through that process is, I love that part. I love that part of my job as well. So that is probably my favorite part. My part that I love so much, you know, really like stretching to think about, for example, on the fire scenario, where that money would come from in the immediacy. And so that is just an area of, you know, learning and reaching out and using my experts again to be able to navigate that portion.
Thank you so much for sharing. Again, really appreciate the work that you did ahead of time. I know it's homework to do, especially over vacation weeks, so really appreciate that. And yeah, I appreciated you walking us through your thought process.
You're welcome.
So I'll kick it back to Catherine, I think we'll ask some questions now?
Yes, that sounds great. So everyone has their interview questions, and we'll just start. Armando, are you willing to be the first to ask a question?
Sure.
All right. So I wonder if you'd like to ask your first question?
Okay. I think you've touched on a lot of these already, so they may seem pretty familiar. How would you approach engaging parents in their children's academic progress, especially in the early grades, where we may want the children to come in and have some sight words and some counting and so on, to improve the overall academics in Stoughton Public Schools? and some counting and so on, to improve the overall academics in Stoughton School in the early grades, setting that great foundation that they can move up on?
Yeah. Fortunately, as superintendent of Stoughton, I have a tremendous team behind me. Some of them are actually here in this room tonight. And so those elementary school principals are experts and I would rely very heavily on them for their knowledge and expertise of their own communities about what would work in their communities to engage parents and to bring them into the fold. Those are conversations we often have at the leadership team level now. I think making schools a place that are not to be feared, that they are resources, that they are places to come to learn and to laugh and to share and to develop is a really important message for some of our families to receive from the Stoughton Public Schools. And so, you know, making these events as inviteable or as enticing as possible, you know, providing childcare if necessary, so parents who can't leave young children at home, providing them with resources that they can understand, that are in their language, you know, having game nights, providing information about outside resources that aren't necessarily Stoughton Public Schools, but that are at their disposal and would be really beneficial to them as families. I think those are all avenues to try to really attract families to partner with Stoughton Public Schools because without them, we really can't do the important work that we need to. If they're not engaged with us, then we're missing a huge piece of that puzzle.
Yeah, I'd love to actually see the Stoughton School partner with the library to do a lot of these because you have all these little kids and meeting time and so on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Armando. Lindsay?
Yeah, I would love it if you could tell us, Ms. Miller, about what would be your plans for your first year as superintendent?
So this would be a very unique situation because I would be, I'd have a year before my first year and I work in the district now, so I have a little bit of that advantage of already knowing the system. But I would want some of my first year to be an opportunity to really listen and hear from the stakeholders because it would be a different position. I would be in a different perspective. And so I'd want to hear their thoughts and ideas about Stoughton Public Schools and what is working and what is not working, what areas they would like to explore more and where we can do a better job. And so, in part, that's what I would be spending a part of that year doing. However, since I'm also already in the district and I know a lot of the players and the people and I know the community fairly well, it does give me the opportunity to hit the ground running at the same time. But I've learned to make sure to take, to be a little slow about that and a little bit intentional about the moves that you make because if you move too quickly, you're going to hit that resistance pretty quickly and things will fall apart even faster. And so making sure that people are with you, that they're ready for those changes that you might be making, that they've had the input, that they've had the opportunity to provide some feedback, that you've heard their voice, and then you can make those changes. So I already have some thoughts in my mind about things that we can do and we should do to make Stoughton Public Schools a better place, more efficient and functioning, higher achieving. And so I'm excited about those ideas, but I certainly don't want to railroad anyone. And like I said, want to have the opportunity to talk to others first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lindsay. My question is, knowing that we have an elementary school building project underway and a middle school project on the horizon, could you tell us a little bit about your experience with the MSBA and what you would do in your first year, kind of piggybacking on Lindsay's, to help advance that elementary school building project, which hopefully will be underway at that time?
Yes. So if you drive down a little ways and hit Pearl Street, you'll see an amazing building right there on the corner of Adams and Pearl. And I had the amazing opportunity to participate in that building project from start to finish. When I first came to Stoughton High School in 2012, the district had already submitted an SOI, a statement of interest to the MSBA. It had been denied. So in 2012, 2013, our first submittal had been denied. And so I really hit the ground from the very beginning with that project. We worked that SOI and really advocated and campaigned to get a positive vote for the MSBA. So from that very point forward, I was intimately involved in the project. I have been to MSBA, I've presented to MSBA, I wrote the educational plan for Stoughton High School. I've had that full experience. I've had the experience of doing change orders and looking at plans and looking at the educational plan up against those plans, communicating with parents, continuing to have forums throughout the process so that people understand what is happening and what the process is and how soon the building will be done and whether it's on schedule and whether it's under budget. Those are concerns that our community has beyond just our parents, but our taxpayers. So being forthright and forthcoming about that information is really important. That was experience that we had going through the high school project. We did finish the high school project under budget, significantly under budget, I will say. And we would have been on time, but COVID struck. And so we were a little, a few months behind. But it is, it was a massive project. The elementary school project would also be a massive project. It's exciting for the town to think about having another new facility for our children. The high school facility has certainly made an impact and I think we're starting to see that now. And so really educating the families, sharing with the families, working with the elementary staff who will be in that building, making sure that they have the opportunity to look at the plans, make tweaks, have some feedback. That's really important. And it's also important to include the children wherever you can in the project. So, for example, at the high school, we brought a ton of model furniture in, into our library and set it up and classes could sign up to use that space during the day to instruct so that students and teachers could test out the furniture and see which ones they liked. And then we had a survey and they could put their feedback in. We did that in the cafeteria. So wherever you can get student buy-in and opportunity, that's really important as well. And so I would want to bring all that opportunity to that project and share those ideas with that committee.
Thank you. I'll let Chris finish. I've taken your notes. Your turn, Chris.
Thank you. So one of the things that I'm wondering about is organizational culture. So how do you intentionally cultivate a positive and inclusive organizational culture within your school and then as superintendent within the district? And what strategies have you found to be most effective in fostering staff collaboration, morale, and a shared sense of purpose?
Yeah. That's a great question because I think that every employee comes to Stoughton and they want to feel like they're a part of something bigger than themselves. They want to feel like the work that they're doing has a purpose, so it's a great question. Culture is probably the hardest thing to change because you're dealing with human and human behaviors. And so it is hard to change other people. And so that's the hardest, probably the hardest thing to change in an organization. It's easier to change your instructional methods and your hierarchy and your structures and your systems. Those are a little bit easier to change. When you're talking about people and their attitudes and beliefs and philosophies, that becomes a little bit harder. Not impossible, though, and I would cite Stoughton High School as the perfect example. If you walked into Stoughton High School 13 years ago and you walk into it today, it is a totally different place and not just by the physical building. When I first came to Stoughton, there was a palpable confrontational, us versus them administrators, teachers, union feeling in the district. And now that has drastically changed. And not that I think that I am the sole change agent there, but I have certainly worked very hard and diligently to change the culture in my building and to undo that us versus them mentality. And so how you do that is you are a person who is consistent. You have a certain set of values that you adhere to and that you don't change from. I'm a person with integrity, honesty. I'm going to be forthright with you. I'm going to share with you as much information as I can, being transparent, being a little bit persistent and holding that belief that we can be better and we should be better. And then letting that guide every conversation you have, every action you have. It's really important that the teachers and your staff and your colleagues believe in you and feel and know that you believe in them. And so whatever you can do to make those opportunities, you want to be following up. If you say you're going to do something, you need to do it. You need to mean what you say and say what you mean. There needs to be some accountability. You need to be holding people accountable, which means if, you know, if there is some actions that are not agreeable, you know, speaking to them, suggesting changes, moving the district forward and making those changes. But now, if you look in the high school, it's clearly a different picture. And I think in a lot of ways, it's because of those things, the lessons that I learned very early on as principal, about being very transparent, sometimes having a conversation 10, 12, 20 times maybe even with the same person about the same thing, but having that patience to continue to have that conversation because they need to know that you're not going to give up on them and that you believe in them and that you're both working towards some common good. And you need to, sometimes it's about finding what that common good is to make sure that you're both working towards the same goal. And you're going to have disagreements and you're not going to always see eye to eye, but bringing to the table, what is it that we both want? It's likely something about the students. It's likely having the success of the students. So let's start at the place that we both agree and then go from there. And so I have the opportunity now to work hand in hand with the union. I think what happens with the schedule is a perfect example where we were able to come together and agree as an administration and colleagues that what was best for the students. We each had to make some concessions in doing that. We couldn't necessarily get everything that we wanted on both sides, but knowing that we were working for the common good of the school and for the common good of the kids, we were able to have those conversations. We've been able to build trust and that's what it's about, building trust and relationships with people and doing what it takes to make sure that they know that you believe in them and you're somebody who will do what they say they're going to do.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Chris. Karen?
Hello.
Hi.
So you know me?
I do.
We've been in student, uh, school council together. So you know, for me, I'm all about, I was really happy to hear you talk about the success of the student. It's about the student. It's all about the student. For me, that's what it's about. Sometimes that gets lost in talk of finances and schools and, you know, in the end, it's really about students. Right now, Stoughton is increasing in their CPACs and their ELLs and we are now a minority-majority town, which has its own challenges. Different cultures, different socioeconomic backgrounds. Some parents are able to be very involved. Some parents can't be involved at all for whatever their reasons are. So some students will have a very strong support network and are able to really meet high standards. And other students, they don't have that kind of support behind them. So we end up with some students that maybe are low achieving, that could probably use some supports that would help them to achieve higher. And then we have those middle students, those average students. And how can we move them into the next level? And those high achieving students, how can we really boost them so that they're reaching their full potential? I believe I just recently read that more like 80 to 90% of the students in the high school are going on to some form of college. Those colleges, in order to get admitted, they're really, whether it's good or whether it's bad, we can, you know, discuss the benefits or non-benefits of that, but they're looking at SAT scores, ACT scores. They're looking at GPAs and grades. So how can we help the students that are at a less advantage or that are non-standard? How can we help them as a district to improve their scores, to improve their odds of getting into college and universities? Or their dream college and universities, if that's what they're doing, or just their two-year school? And specifically, the students who don't have that strong support network, you know, the students in special ed, the students with IEPs, the students who just don't have the supports at home, who maybe don't have home Wi-Fi, who have a parent who is working till 10 o'clock at night. How can we really elevate those students, given the direction that the town is going in?
Thank you. So you have hit it right on the head that the town is changing, but this isn't the first time Stoughton has seen change. And Stoughton does tend to be fairly adaptable and flexible. And when you look at our families, we are very diverse, as you mentioned. We're diverse in lots of ways beyond just race and ethnicity, income level, former schooling of parents, family structures, there's a variety, religion. There's just a plethora of diversity in Stoughton, which makes it actually a wonderfully unique location. The way you want to look at the students that are at risk, no matter what category they may fall in, is making sure that you are offering a access to high-quality education, regardless of what their background is, regardless of where they're coming from. We want to start at that place. We want to make sure that our college-level classes are college-level classes, that they are preparing our students for whatever their future is. You want to make sure that the curriculum that we're using is inclusive and that it's showing diverse perspectives, diverse authors, diverse information so that our students are being exposed to differences but also similarities. You want to take that opportunity to look at those things. So you want to have that high-quality education, but then you need to build in all those supports to lift those students up because that's what we should be doing. We should not be holding students back. We should not be pushing them down. They should be being lifted up. And so that means, it could be me meaning putting coaches in classes. It could be more paraprofessionals. It could be really looking carefully at our special education process and ensuring that we are providing the correct services for the disability of the child, making sure that the individual educational plans are just that, individual, and not some sort of, you know, shopping list that we just kind of give everybody the same thing because then you're not really helping that child. So looking at our process for special ed, matching those needs with their disability. For EL, you're looking at providing language support in classes. Perhaps it's looking at a different model. I know at the high school, we've looked at a newcomer model recently. So last year, we put some newcomer classes in. So you might have to make some changes to your structures and what you're doing. We have to change and be adaptable with what is happening. We can't look at the situation and say, well, we've always done it this way, so we're just going to keep doing it this way and we're going to fit this square peg in a round hole. That's not how it works. Schools are not a one-size-fits-all, so you need to figure out how to put the supports in place to ensure that our students are reaching their potential. And we are limited in some ways to, you know, reach into the home and help in those particular areas. But in the school building, we can make sure that each of our kids has an adult that they can rely on, that they can go to for support. It's about building those relationships, making sure that they have somebody that they can identify and point to and say, that's my person. They can help me. It's making sure that our students are receiving food, lunch and breakfast when they come in. To the schools, that we are providing them the shelter and the safety that they need, that we're providing them with the counseling services, adjustment counseling services, career and college counseling from an early age, not just at the high school age, you know, starting those conversations in the middle school and sixth grade, maybe even a little bit before then, so that they're starting to think about what their goals might look like. Because, like you mentioned, there's might look like, because like you mentioned, there's, might not be somebody at home guiding that process. They might not be able to even be home to have those conversations with their children. So in those cases, we want to make sure that we're exposing our children to their very many possibilities. And there is all kinds of opportunities for students, whether they're low income or not, to obtain college and career readiness and to obtain pathways to colleges and careers. We at the high school are actually looking at a variety of things to build in additional programming besides just college. We have lots of students who don't necessarily want to go that path. We have had some conversations with some third-party schools about bringing some internships and some dual enrollment to our high school program, which would be very exciting for our students, particularly in the trades. We are on the waiting list for ROTC, so there are lots of different avenues that you can bring into the school building that's going to hopefully attract students who need those avenues that they might not be getting at home. And then in school, it's about teachers who have those relationships with the kids, pushing kids to try that level. You know, you're on the edge, let's try honors. You're on the edge, let's try AP. And then making sure, like I said, that they have the supports in place so that they're successful there.
Thank you so much. Love it. Thank you.
All right. I think in the interest of time, we'll each get one more question. So Armando, back to you.
Only one?
I know.
That's hard.
I think we could keep her on here all night, but I think we have to let her go.
How's the hot seat so far?
It's okay.
Okay, my one question then would be, what modern academic approaches do you plan to introduce to Stoughton Public School? I know that's a crystal ball kind of a question, but there are, I'd like superintendent to be aware of all the economic or academic approaches, modern ones, that seem to have good promises. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about them.
Yes, so academic aspects. So I don't have all the answers are the crystal ball, as you mentioned, but there are lots of various structures that we could look at, that we don't already have in place, that, like I mentioned a little earlier, bringing dual enrollment to the high school, where students are actually learning from a college professor at Stoughton High School during the Stoughton High School Day and receiving college credit at the same time as they're receiving high school credit. We have dual enrollment right now, but it's not that. The kids have to attend Bridgewater State or Massa Soyit for the full day. They don't get to be at the high school. So looking at different structures would be one thing that I would want to be looking for, and that would be across the board. I really am interested to actually get into the elementary schools. We've had some conversation about units of study and literacy. I sort of see at the high school level, some of, some concerns around literacy and writing as the whole district is. And so I'm really curious to get in there and get a better understanding what units of study is and what that looks like and how it works, so that I can offer some suggestions or offer some other methods or suggest that we look at some other avenues. Not that we have to change units of study. I don't want anyone in the room to get nervous, but just that we might want to look at what are there other things that could come in. There are lots of different math practices that we should be looking at for the pre-K through 12. We want to make sure that our students are coming through the system, having their numeracy and their math facts down, and that is an area that is an expertise of mine. And I would really be excited to get in there and talk about math with my fellow math geeks. I think there are things that we can do at the high school level too, in terms of looking at like project-based learning instead of the traditional, you know, teach one lesson and then move on to the next concept. There are lots of opportunities in the new schedule at the high school, particularly for changing sort of the structures and systems that we have in place. And there are lots of models to do that. I had the opportunity to visit another local, not so local, but one of the Hockamock League schools that we participate, play with, went to that school and toured their facility about the great things they're doing down there. That provided me some really mind-opening opportunities to look at the different pathways we could be offering, starting down in sixth grade and building up, so that students are actually graduating from Stoughton High School with a certificate that actually is an employability skill. And perhaps even think about graduating Stoughton High School with a Stoughton High School diploma and an associate's degree at the same time. Those are real possibilities. And so those are the ideas that are in my mind right now, but I would also be reaching out to my colleagues and the other people of the team to get their ideas as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Lindsay? She's still had notes, sorry.
Armando, I know you like that math stuff. I know you liked Karen's math. I did too.
Sorry, I was writing slowly. But my next question is kind of a three-parter, so that makes it sound more complicated than it is, but can you tell us about the most important decision that you've made in the last year or two? How did you go about developing your decision or your course of action and what alternatives did you consider?
I thought you only had one more question.
Sorry. I mean, tell us about the most important decision.
I'm just teasing. Wow, the biggest decision I've made, that is, that's a big question.
You're here.
I am. Yeah, this is it now. I'm going to say the school schedule really was the biggest decision that I've made, and that wasn't solely my decision, and I recognize that. But moving that forward and getting that to a place that it is, that has really been transformational at the high school. And so I think that is probably my biggest decision, because it's having such a great impact. And it was also like two years of work behind that schedule and the work that we did as a faculty council, side by side, looking at schedules. It was a long time coming, that decision, but that was the biggest decision, I think, in the past year. What was your other questions? I'm sorry.
The other two parts of it, which you can kind of take in any order, is how did you go about developing that, which I think you just alluded to, and then what alternatives did you consider?
Yes, so, well, when we were looking at schedules, we had lots of alternatives. We, if you recall, we had, currently, we were working in a schedule that was four days of short blocks and four days of long blocks. And so we looked at lots of different combinations, because we were taking in feedback from all of our faculty through all the departments. And to try to get 135 people to agree is nearly impossible, and this was no small feat either. So, you know, some people liked the long block, some people liked the short block, some people wanted some kind of combination. And so really, working with the faculty and the departments about, well, we really need the four lunches, so we really need a long block in that lunch period, and really talking about the benefits of that, why we were making those decisions, constantly being transparent with the departments about why we needed to have flex block, second block and not first block, why we needed to have four lunches and not three lunches, why we needed to think about freezing the schedule rather than a constant rotation. So really, all of our decisions, we were very transparent about, we did a lot of communicating about, we talked a lot about with the departments and in faculty meetings and in collaborations. I would go to collaborations and have those conversations. So it was a lot of, a long process to get there. And so, you know, it has been a learning curve, of course. There are some bumps along the way, but we are also making sure that we didn't abandon our teachers. We went to this new schedule and said, you know, good luck. We have been providing professional development and lots of conversation, and people have had the opportunity to provide feedback, so we will continue to look at that. Once the decision is made, that doesn't mean that we can walk away and move on to the next decision. We need to be looking at that change, and this is something I think we can do at Stoughton a little bit more frequently, is looking at the things that we've done, the decisions we've made, and honestly evaluating them and evaluating them over a period of time to make sure that they are working or not working before jumping to the next thing or buying the next shiny object. So I think really taking the time to make sure that the things that we have are working, assessing them, and the same thing is true with this schedule and making this decision, making sure that the teachers have the support they need, the students have the support they need, and that we are evaluating to make sure we made the right decision.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lindsay. My question is very hypothetical, but how would you keep the school committee informed? Specifically, what is your philosophy around issues that would be your responsibility as a superintendent, where the school committee may have an interest?
I think it's really important that I build a relationship with each of you in the school committee, because we both need to be able to trust each other and we need to be able to have difficult conversations at times. Communication is super important, and I would spend a little bit of time getting to know your preferences in terms of communication, and each of you might have different preferences, and so trying to work through that and making sure that we find a place that the way I'm communicating to you is the way you want to be communicated with and that it's being effective. I think when situations arise, it is important for the school committee to know. There are some details you won't be able to know, but to have a heads-up or an understanding that there is some issue that has happened, so that you aren't caught off guard, that you don't see something in the newspaper before you've heard from me, that you have had the opportunity to ask questions that you might need, because even though obviously it's confidential and you aren't necessarily sharing that information with others, you don't want to be caught off guard. You don't want to have some kind of surprise when you go to the grocery store and have someone say something to you. That is not a good feeling and that breeds mistrust. And so we need to make sure that I have the opportunity to share that with you, and I would do so frequently.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris?
So our district is a multimillion-dollar operation, and some people want us to run the district like a business. What's your response to this approach and how have you incorporated that into your work with budgets in the past?
Yeah. So I find school systems are sort of in this gray area where we want to be a business, but you really can't be a business. You deal with humans, you deal with children, you're developing, you are a human business in that way. And so you can't, it doesn't really follow the business model of like the CEO and how they do those things. When it comes to budgets, I've had the opportunity to manage the high school budget now, and I know it's significantly smaller than the district budget, but it is generally the same. The way I plan my budget would be generally the same as the way I would be thinking about the district budget. First, I would start with making sure that we have a collective vision and then creating a strategic plan. In my case, right now, it's a school improvement plan in the district level, it's a triennial plan, but creating that plan based on that vision that we've identified that we want to work towards. That helps to drive your budget, because you want to make sure that whatever you have put in your triennial plan, you're supporting financially, so that you can bring those things to fruition. There are some things in the budget that are non-negotiables, right? We have salaries, contract obligations, utilities, we need the lights on. So those are things that are definitely going to be in the budget, and we don't really have a lot of wiggle room there, and we don't have a lot of say on what those costs might be. So those have to go in first, but then you're building on top of that the things to address your strategic plan or your triennial plan, so that you're supporting that. And you also want, you want to make sure you're at least maintaining level services, and often that means, you know, an increase in the amount that's required for that. So you want to be building that in. The budget process in Stoughton is, I've had the opportunity to observe that now for quite some time, and I think the other piece of that that's really important is, yes, we need to be fiscally responsible. We are not the sole spender of money, of the taxpayers' money, so we have to be fiscally responsible, and so we have to keep that in mind as we build that budget. But I also, as superintendent and the face and the voice for the district, and we are only a small system in a larger system of the town. So it starts too, with not only building that budget and being fiscally responsible and making sure that we're putting in there what our kids need and fighting for that, but it also means that I am building relationships with the different town departments and ensuring from the start, before we even start talking about money, that I've established that relationship, that we are working together. There is a way to build a budget where you are able to support and lift up the other town departments. You do not need to tear them down. We should not be fighting and conflicting with each other. Yes, I'm going to fight for the budget that our town needs, but there is a way to conduct that business, at least from my perspective and the way I would conduct business, where we don't need to tear each other down to fight for that same pot of money. And so those are the things that I would be working on as a superintendent from the start, by building my relationships, making sure that we have a collective vision, a triennial plan or a strategic plan that aligns with that vision, and then moving forward with that budget process. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chris. Karen?
First of all, I just love all your answers.
Oh, thanks.
Just really, really excited to have you here and grateful that you have applied. So thank you for that before this whole thing ends. You know, my question is going to be based, you know, I'm going to talk about the kids that don't have all the privileges that some of the other kids have. So, you know, the kids that I'm talking about, the ones that don't have the supports at home, the ones that have to go to work right after school because they're required to contribute to the families, the ones who have to go home and take care of younger siblings, and sometimes they have to make dinner for those siblings because their parent or parents or guardians are working till late or have to pick up extra shifts. In order, just my opinion, in order for kids to really do well in school, they have to have some kind of buy-in, they have to feel that they're part of the community. For those kids, even, you know, some of our special ed kids, some of our ELL kids, it's harder for them to really take part in things like after-school sports and after-school clubs, and yet that's such a large part of being in the school community. So I'm wondering what you think that the district can do to just envelope those kids more, to be able to include them in the greater community, not just going to class and coming home and doing your homework and, you know, but really making them feel like they're part of the community and a buy-in for the school, so they feel like they're a black knight.
Absolutely. So we offer, as a district, a lot of after-school programming, and I think that after COVID, their participation in those things has sort of dipped in general. And so it's not just the students who need to take care of, sorry, need to take care of a child at home or sibling at home, but there's something a little bit bigger going on there. So we need to, first of all, making sure that the things that we're offering are things that our children are even interested in. We have some clubs at the high school that are hugely popular, but that have been running forever. And so, and we have others that have been running forever and are not so popular. So maybe it's looking at what clubs are we offering? For our EL population, you know, we have started to offer programs like the Haitian Club and the Spanish Club and the Portuguese Club, so that they feel like there's a connection there, maybe with their culture or their language, or with other students who share that same culture or language. So it's about finding those things that they want to connect with. They may not want to participate in DECA, but maybe they love Dungeons and Dragons. So, you know, surveying kids and having them tell us what it is they want to participate in, and surveying families to see what they might want for their children who are younger. It is about making those connections with adults. Again, I can't stress enough that most of what we do as educators is build relationships. If you don't build the relationship, you cannot attract that kid, you cannot keep that kid in that seat, you can't have him stay after school, they don't want to be there. They need to have a connection with an adult in that building. So working with our staff to make sure that they're taking that time to get to know their kids, encourage them, reaching out, sharing the information, making sure that we get that information out. I know for myself, this year, I've spent a lot of time doing a weekly update every Friday that I send out to families, and in that, putting in the information about clubs and activities, putting in their information about, you know, upcoming events after school or the things that the Stoughton Public Library is running. Just because they aren't staying with us, perhaps they would go stay at the Stoughton Public Library and make a connection there. So putting those things out there and getting that information out is really important. I think sometimes we assume that parents know, kids know, just by osmosis or being in the building, and so that's not good enough. We need to be putting that information out as often as we can and doing that reach out, you know, reaching out to families in the younger grades to encourage them to participate in whatever program it is, you know, do that in multiple modes. in whatever program it is, you know, do that in multiple modes, whether it's social media, whether it's an email, whether it's a phone call, whether it's a letter that goes in a backpack to go home, whatever that is, but trying different modes is hugely important. And then making sure, obviously, our communication is in multiple languages for our families. And so, just building those relationships, reaching out, sharing the information, connecting with kids, encouraging them, putting things in place that they actually want to participate in and getting their voice in that is, I think, the magic formula there.
Appreciate that so much. I couldn't agree more. The relationships are huge. Once you break relationships with kids, you've lost them and it doesn't take much when they're a child to lose their trust and their relationship. So, it is really important. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to everyone, to all the school committee members. Ms. Miller, do you have anything we didn't touch on that you would like to share with us as we consider your candidacy? I mean, we've covered a lot. You've certainly been very well prepared for this, but I'll give you a chance to make a closing statement or anything.
Yeah, of course. I have been an educator now for 27 years. I was floored when I did the math for the interview. I know, you know, I don't look at, certainly, but 27 years. The last 13 years, I have had the privilege and honor to serve the community of Stoughton as the principal. It has been a roller coaster. It has been some of the most joyous and sorrowful times. It has been some of the most hilarious times. It has been a challenge to me. It has developed me as a person and a professional and all this time, it has been preparing me for this moment. I am super excited to have the opportunity to even be considered for this position. It is truly, I am truly grateful that Dr. Baieda put me forward with his confidence and trust to you as his recommendation. I am honored by that. I am generally the hardest worker in the room. I will roll up my sleeves and dig right in. I will not ask anybody to do anything I wouldn't do myself. I will work diligently. I am persistent. I persevere challenges, do not frighten me. I am somebody who says what they mean and mean what they say. I'm honest. I'm a person of integrity and that is how I will conduct business at all times. I will never waver from those values. I am extremely grateful for your extension for an interview today. I hope I've had the opportunity to share with you in a way that excites you about my candidacy and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris?
I was just wondering if you had any questions for us?
Oh.
Not that you aren't familiar with the school system.
Well, generally, I would love to ask a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
What do you, as school committee members, see as the strengths of Stoughton Public Schools?
Yeah, it's the diversity. Absolutely, our best quality in Stoughton. So grateful that my children grew up in a town that has incredible diversity through not just race but with gender and gender identity and with different abilities and yeah, by far, our strongest and our greatest quality in Stoughton.
Chris?
I would absolutely plus one of that and would include just the level of engagement in our town. I have never lived in a place that has been so engaged. The students are really engaged, the staff, the parents, the community members. We just have to remember sometimes that we are actually all interested in the same thing. It's just how do we get on that same page? But there's a webpage called Stoughton Enthusiasts for a reason.
I want to echo both of yours. You know, that was one of the reasons that we settled here and chose to raise children here was the diversity, getting the chance. We both grew up in communities that were very, that still had very strong divisions and the opportunity for my children to get to embrace and meet people from diverse backgrounds in all ways was wonderful, the community engagement. Also, just, you know, the community's support. I know that we're having a little bit of loggerheads with the school project, but at heart, Stoughton does believe and it's great to see a community believe in education and, you know, it sometimes was very grudging in its support, but at the end of the day, this is a town that does believe in itself and that it's something special and that the community has some great opportunities. Lindsay?
I think what I have come to really appreciate in my time on the school committee is just the spirit of innovation that I see in the district. I think I've seen it at elementary, middle, high school level. I think I've seen it at the district level, but I think we just have folks who are really willing to roll up their sleeves, try something new, maybe fail, learn from it, collect the data, like evaluate the process and I think that is just, I think that is something I just really appreciate and love to lean into where we get the chance.
I always see that Stoughton Schools' greatest strength has a huge potential. I mean, folks behind me, you, school committee members, so dedicated to getting the kids what they need or bringing up to the highest potential that it can be achieved. It's just wonderful actually to see. Wouldn't be here if that potential wasn't there and looking forward to seeing new leadership come in and really realize that potential, just take it to the, cliche, next level. And I think a lot of your answers seems like that's where we're going with Stoughton Schools.
Thank you. Sorry, can I just, I want to just name, I think, I want to make the implicit explicit in a lot of our responses and I think what I heard is like the people, the students, the staff, the community, just like really, and the attitudes, approaches and mindsets they bring to the work. So, I think just to like pull that thread together if I could.
Do I have time for another question?
Sure.
What's an area you would like to see Stoughton Public Schools explore a little bit more?
Easy, vocation. Sorry, for me, it's vocation, it's doing more with that. There used to be. I mean, you and I remember from Stoughton Schools, there used to be like a woodworking shop, there used to be screen printing and metal fab and there might be some collaboration in the works, which is for me extremely exciting. I would love to see more. I think even Armando had brought it up before, like a going outside, Chris, I think you brought it up too, going outside businesses and seeing if they can't find some kind of collaboration there, but yeah, definitely.
Plus one. Having a voc background myself and dual enrollment, like you said, exploring other structures, other, I'm very excited about that, internships. But an area I'd really love to explore is working on career pathways and not just for our students, but growing our pipeline of talent.
Which we're kind of doing tonight in our succession meeting. I think for me, this may be because my children are a little bit younger, but when we, when you were here presenting about the graduation requirements and how we, we had the discussions afterwards about, you know, what are the opportunities that come from not having the MCAS and one was sort of blowing up the traditional subjects and rethinking interdisciplinary approaches. I'm thinking of like STEAM. So, I'm very much into the arts, full disclosure. I don't want to drop them, but in ways we can integrate more of, you know, with the elementary school project, really get the STEM lab, are there ways we can introduce those or incorporate those throughout the disciplines? So, that's my little pet project.
I hate to be repetitive here, but I think post-secondary planning is something that I, is really important to me and just knowing that like, what is, what is the point of K through 12 if we're not like graduating students who are like ready to contribute, be happy, like healthy adults who are able to make the life for themselves that they want? So, I think for me, I think about the vocational and the career pathways. I also think about like advising to get students there, like what are the relationships? I know you spoke to that a lot. How do we bring all of these pieces together when we know what works and make sure that students have what they need to do what they want to after graduation? So, I guess this is a long answer, but the resources to support, post-secondary planning.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I agree with everyone here, especially when Karen asked you the questions about kids that are not able to really concentrate in school because they have other responsibilities after school. I'd love to see some type of program through the schools that when some of those responsibilities, if it's work-related responsibility, as Karen said, to share, that the schools gets involved and perhaps a job fair in which you can bring in. Businesses that not only want the labor, but they have opportunities for the kids to learn. So, if they're not getting full-time and ideas and learning in school, when they're out of school, working, they are still learning and it's something that I think the schools can really put the finger on that I don't think individual parents can probably do that because they just need the money. And at the schools, we want them to need the education and see if we can find employment such that they continue to learn outside of school when they can't pick it up. And even the possibility of internships, paid internships, that can actually, they can, kids can actually get some credit for, school credits, so they can graduate if they're, if they determine they, after school, they still have to work eight hours to help out with the family. Those things I'd love to see come from Stoughton Schools. They really put the icing on the cake as far as supporting the kids, you know, something like that I'd love to see.
Excellent. One more?
Sure.
How would you define a positive working relationship between the school committee and the superintendent? What would that look like?
Me first?
Sure.
Friendly. I love the fact that you brought teams. That's my area, at least that's, at least I wrote a thesis on teams and I really love the fact that people can work as teams and I look at it as the school committee has its responsibility area and superintendent has a responsibility area, but let's just jumble it up and talk about it and see if my wonderful members here in the school committee can offer some ideas, some suggestions that might be acceptable to the school. I like the fact that it's honest. I love for someone to say, no, Armando, that idea is not going to work. This is the reason why. Dr. Baieda has said that to me many times.
Long time no see.
I'd love to see that continue forward. I don't think anyone here, you know, will take offense when the superintendent is going to say, no, you're wrong and this is the reason why. As long as there's a reason why, it's an opportunity for the school committee to learn and vice versa. We're all adults and we can learn from each other. I like that type of good relationship. I love a good debate. I have no issues with a solid heated debate, but afterwards, we're friends again and we go on to the next debate if necessary or whatever. That's what I love to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd agree with a lot of what you shared, Armando. I think the expectation, like there might not always be 100% agreement, but the ability to walk through your thinking and how you got to a certain conclusion, all of the factors, I think that always really helps me. I think something that I found really helpful too in our relationships with superintendents is a shared vision. So, I think students first and everything else sort of falls into place and being able to ground in that shared vision really sets the stage for a really functional working relationship where we can be honest and transparent. I think another thing that I've come to really appreciate too is just shared learning and shared, not quite professional development, but like it's, this is, this is a learning process. We are six human beings trying to do our best here. So, I think as a new superintendent, having a school committee who could support your professional development would be really important. But then also, I think another thing that I've found really helpful is just when the superintendent keeps in mind, these are five folks from the community volunteering who may or may not have an educational background and taking the time to really like explain, which I know you've done in many a meeting, like how you got to certain conclusions, what the regulations are and just really like bringing the spirit of lifelong learning into that relationship, I think can go a really long way.
I want to echo what Lindsay and Armando said, you know, the shared vision, working together as a team, kind of continuing on with Lindsay's, you know, the patience with each other, clearing communication, but also patience because again, we're just members of the community. At the same time, we need to be patient with you because you have a lot of things on your plate as well. So, I think that's helpful, just to, you know, a shared understanding of, yeah, we both have a lot on our plate, both sides have a lot on our plate, but we're both working towards a common goal and we want what's best for the kids and as long as we communicate that and, you know, at the end of the day, we'll be a team. Chris?
It's a great question and I think some of the things you've already communicated are there. The proactive communications, I think, are really important, that we're not blindsided or that if we know something is coming down the pipe, being prepared for it because a lot of times we're answerable to the community. We are the ambassadors of the school district often, but we're not always prepared that way. One of the interesting tensions between the superintendent and the school committee is kind of the checks and balances of our roles, but the superintendent technically, that person has a lot of the technical expertise that we do not, even if we do have an education background in terms of the budgeting process, the federal and state regulations and mandates, the whole, you know, Massachusetts chapter law landscape, the funding formulas, all of that, contracting, it's a lot. It is a lot and we do tend to lean on the superintendent, but it's very rare that I see that leaning go the other way. Superintendents don't necessarily recognize the experiences and expertise and perspectives, diverse perspectives that the school committee brings to the table. So, I would love to see a more intentional leveraging of the school committee, not necessarily that we need to have a say in everything and all that, but, but there are times when our opinions or our backgrounds may be of use and I think we would like to feel more useful at times than maybe we do.
Thank you.
I am so sad to say that we are losing two amazing school committee members and it hurts me, but we are getting two new school committee members and I think when I was a new school committee member, just getting one-on-one with the superintendent and really just establishing, like you've already said, relationships, it's huge. If you want us to buy in to all of these awesome, and I can see you have so many awesome, like you really are already like ready to dig in and to do it and I'm excited for that and I want to support all of that. It's going to be a lot easier for us to buy in to everything you want to do if you can just sit and talk with us and just be you, honest and open and transparent and say, this is what I want to do, this is why I want to do it. And then we might say, this is what we want to do, this is what I've been hearing in the community, this is what people are coming up to me and saying to me in the group set I am in and I can do that with you. And you can't do that unless you somehow carve out in the ridiculously busy day of a superintendent and it's, I think you know, and Dr. Baieda is constantly, he's like, I can call you on my way to the DAW. You know, it's, sometimes it's that, but if you can really carve out some time, scheduled regular time, to just sit with each one and just establish that relationship with us, especially with the new ones, so that when they do have these questions of, you know, I'm new on board, I don't have an education background, what does, you know, these, there's a lot of acronyms that are thrown around. Sometimes instead of in the middle of a school committee meeting where it's like, I have no idea what IDEA means, you know, or, you know, some of the other stuff that I was like, I have no idea what your people are talking about. You know, to be able to sit down and go over, okay, this is the program that's in place and this is what we're doing. I think that, just a one-on-one, you know, kind of thing is not just always a phone call. It's really important, I think, to get our buy-in.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I want to thank you very much for all of your time preparing, for all of your time answering our questions. I really appreciate that. I want to thank everyone else who came in, our viewers online on SMAC for taking the time to get to know our candidate better and understand that. Does anybody have anything else to add?
Just want to second the gratitude for, again, the amount of prep that went into this. Really appreciate that and really appreciate your responses tonight.
My pleasure.
All right. All right. Well, our next, we will have, we have a special meeting tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday, March 4th at 7:00 PM. I have to confirm that based on the finance committee meeting, which may also be next week, to be determined. So stay tuned. Our next regular school committee meeting will be Tuesday, March 11th here in the conference room. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
That was made by Lindsay. A second?
Sir.
All right, I'll give that to Karen. It's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's 5-0. This meeting is adjourned at 8:31 PM. Thank you all for coming and good night.